All right. Good evening and welcome everybody to the May 19th Village Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I ask that everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there are no minutes tonight. Unfortunately, our recording secretary has just finished recovering, speaking of IT issues, from a few IT issues of her own, so we will vote on everything next week or next meeting. So, thank you Claudia for, I know it's been a hard redo, but thank you. All right, first item on the agenda is a public hearing for gold. For the ARB and Ridge Preservation Review, proposed renovations to include additional windows, roof changes to existing single-family dwelling. Said property is located for Princeton Drive Highland Mills and is known to the Village Woodbury Tax Map, Section 245, Block 1, Lot 8. All right, Mr. Gold or anybody representing Mr. Gold?
I'm the builder.
Okay. All right, everybody got the picture that we requested, Sandy requested be sent over, review, okay? Yankee, right? Is that how you say it?
Yes.
Yes, just a quick thousand-foot view of what you guys are here for, and then we'll go out to the public for comment.
So basically, we have the, we have the same footprint that as before, we're changing the windows. At some places, we add some windows, a little bit bigger windows, and then we do a skylight. That's basically for the outside, then a little bit bigger there.
All right, but the act of building footprint is staying the same, there's no footprint changes to the building, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, is there anybody here that wishes to speak on the gold application? Please unmute yourself. And then state your name and where you live, and then your comments, please.
Herman Fisher, I'm the designer. I live at 3 Frankfurt Road, 111 York, 1095.
And you have comments, sir, on this application?
I basically did a design and no comments, I'm the designer.
Okay, thank you very much for letting us know you were here. Anybody else wishing to speak on the gold application, I ask that you please unmute yourself, state your name and address, and any comments that you have on the gold application?
Hi, my name is Joel Gold, I'm actually the owner of Fort Princeton.
Good evening, Mr. Gold.
Good evening.
Okay. Going to be final call for the gold application? Anybody wishing to speak on the gold application? Unmute yourself and state your name and address. I feel like we're at a Chinese auction, going once, knowing twice. Last call for the gold application. I'll make a motion to post a public hearing for the gold application.
Second.
Second by Tommy, any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's?
Rich, I think you're muted. There you go. Yep.
Yep.
Okay. All right, we, any comments, last comments from the board, from the planning board itself on the gold application? We did ask council to write a draft resolution of approval with the condition of how, that we had spoke about at the last meeting. Sorry. You guys just want me to go into the resolution?
Yep, sounds good.
After several pages of conditions and findings, there are two specific conditions, all new windows shall be constructed of non-reflective material. Prior to the signing, that's number one, and number two, prior to the signing of the plan, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village planner dated April 18, 2021, to the satisfaction of the village planner. Any questions on that?
No.
You okay, Rick?
Yeah, the one thing that you had wanted to be added in that we have in the findings, in addition to your usual findings, is found at the, under the findings heading, the last sentence, because we're dealing with a white color, if you recall, and we wanted an additional finding to distinguish this, so that it couldn't be setting a precedent widely with respect to the color white for Ridge Preservation ARB. And it says additionally, the planning board has approved the color white for the renovations, as white is the existing color of the dwelling. No new construction outside of the present footprint is proposed, and the structure will not be visible from a designated view corridor.
Yes, thank you very much for that, Rick. Does the board have any other questions or comments or concerns?
What happened, Tom?
Your window moved, I couldn't find you for a minute. Okay, I'll offer a motion to approve the resolution as drafted by council.
I'll second.
Second by Sandy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gold, you're all set.
Thank you very much, appreciate you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on this evening's agenda, Jacob ARB 5 Alligator. Alligator Review and Discuss ARB and Proposed Single Family Dwelling Located Within the Subdivision Known As Woodbury Villas. Said property is located in 5 Alligator Cross in Central Valley, and is known to the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 255, Block 1, Lot 8. Larry, this is you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Laddie Hartman, I'm the designer of this project. This is a residence, once, basically, it's going to be in a ranch style, which means it's going to have just one story, and with some areas raised and a basement underneath, but most of it is going to be just a single, just a single story. I've put together a booklet, which includes obviously the plot plan, which has the site plan and the proposed footprint on it. Also has just the total, the site map, the text map, which gives you the context of the area. I've put together the floor plans, which is page 3 and 4, the elevations, the 3D rendering, and material choice regarding the size and things like that. I've put together a comparison table, also photos for the houses I'm comparing to. As far as size, it's going to be smaller than the two, just make sure. It's going to be smaller than, total square footage will be smaller than the two that I compared to. So these, yeah, as you see on the screen, those two are, to compare, approved houses, that was approved, one back in 2013, one back in 2019. This house, as far as square footage, total square footage is going to be smaller than both of them. And if you take a look at the 3D, it's just a single story. I don't think it's going to be visible from any area, since it's just a one-story from the back. It has the buffer zone, which means the forever green, it's impossible to see anything, even from the side that has a house, and it still has the trees which they plan to keep within the 10 feet of the property lot.
Thank you, Larry. Matt, you want to go ahead with your report, please?
Sure, so we prepared a memo for the board dated May 13, 2021. With regard to Ridge Preservation, we noted that the applicant hasn't, hadn't in the submission identified whether the roof of the structure would be visible from any of the designated view corridors. That is, is something that is required. On the ARB application, the color of the home is identified as Nova White. The Ridge Preservation standards require the structure to be of a natural color. And in this location, white would likely be highly visible, and we don't believe it constitutes natural color at this location. The roof slopes follow the natural contour, and the charcoal shingles seem to meet this standard, and we acknowledge that as a one-story over a partial basement, this house has a relatively lower profile compared to others. As with previous proposals, we suggest that the planning board require a anti-reflection window film on any low-e windows that are proposed with a southerly exposure. The applicant should confirm that there is no vegetation clearing or removal of trees over eight inches caliper. We didn't see any specification of landscaping, which, which comes up in just a couple of comments. The applicant will be required to meet ARB standards. And the Ridge Preservation may be waived if the applicant submits information that does indicate that this particular site is not visible from any of the designated. With regard to the ARB, the applicant has submitted the photos for the planning board to make their determination on whether or not this is excessively similar or dissimilar to surrounding homes. We did note that there on the first floor plan, the two rooms to the left of the garage are not labeled. I don't know if maybe the applicant could just provide that information here.
I don't know if it's, comment, that's a study and a pass of the kitchen, we decided about that.
Okay. So with regard to the bulk requirements, the planning board application should be updated to indicate that it's within the CCDOD overlay district. Maximum lot coverage governed by R 0.25 standards. Proposed lot coverage should be shown and should not exceed 35% of the lot area. Lot area and yard requirements are based on the WP3 subdivision sheet OP3. Needs to be 30,000 square feet, 40-foot front yard, 15-foot side yard, 35-foot rear yard, and it appears that those requirements are met. The lot size and lot width is obviously not changing, and building height is within the 35-foot requirement. So it looked to us like grading would be needed on the north and west sides of the structure, and we defer to the, the planning board engineer, if, if the proposed grading is fully shown, it seemed like it might be missing. We didn't see any landscaping proposed of any, of any type. Front landscaped area 25 feet in width with one shade tree for every feet of road frontage is required by code. So we also had a question, there's no turnaround area on the driveway. And again, we defer to the planning board engineer on whether there's some kind of culvert will be required or drainage structure between the driveway and the roadway. With regard to seeker, we defer to Rick, but it seems like this is a type-two action, and we are not aware of any resources within 500 feet that would trigger the need for GMO 239 review.
All right, thank you, Max.
Welcome.
Questions for Max?
If I could ask, what was that, the one shaded tree per 25 feet of of rubbish?
Mm-hmm.
So for example, this one has, let me see the site plan, site plan is more, the second sheet is the site plan. One more, here we go. So if, so something like that has around a hundred, I think 140, you would need the minimum of approximately six shaded trees.
Yes, every 40 feet.
Every 40, oh.
Every 40, so it would be less than six, right?
Yeah, and that shaded tree is, has to be in the front or?
It has to be 25 feet, so, so the idea is 25 feet, the first 25 feet of the lot.
The problem is there isn't any trees now. The first, I mean, the, the property is wooded, but the first 40 feet, because the, because the, they changed the topography of the road.
Right.
It was raised and they had to remove the first 40 feet. There isn't a single tree from the rest of the trees we planted to keep quite a bit.
Understood, yeah, this, this is a shade tree easement, so the idea is to have trees along the road. So it's 140 feet, you would need three, to plant three or four shade trees in that area.
So you can plant them, you can plant them, it doesn't have to.
These are, these are new shade trees to be planted.
Okay, great. Also regarding the, where can I kind of do a little bit of research? Where's the, the Ridge Preservation areas where you would see it? Is that somewhere, is that part of the Woodbury Town, Woodbury code?
Yeah, the roadways are designated in the town of Woodbury code.
Village of Woodbury.
Village, no.
Village of Woodbury.
I mean, no, the question is regarding the specific areas from where you would be able to see this specific lot in order to, in order to, to get exempt of the Ridge Preservation.
They're listed on the zoning map.
That's right.
On the zoning map?
Yes, there are several car, view corridors listed.
Okay, I'll take a look at that as well, thanks a lot.
I, I think that white may be, given the height and where the house is, that white may be an issue. There is a white house already up in that development that stands out pretty, pretty proudly.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, but there is a possibility, this, the way, where this is located might be not a location, if you take a look at the text map and the overall, it has, it's probably very hard to see unless you're right in front of it or for any, I'll take, I'll take a look at that specific code then.
Yeah, so what, what you would have to do if you're looking to get exempt from that, and Rick, keep me honest, or Natalie, keep me honest, you would have to show from the view corridor, a picture, looking up at where this structure is, home is going to be, so that we would, so we'd be able to tell that it's not viewable from those quarters. I think the Orange County planning website has the zoning map on it too, with the, with the overlay, doesn't it, Natalie?
I'll take a look, I guess it's strategically, locations match those view quarters, kind of, you know, has a view from all over, I guess, I'll take a look at that.
I'm pretty sure the zoning map is on the Village of Woodbury's website, but while we're.
It's also on the county, it's both, I think.
I'll be honest with you, I gone to the county to get it last time I needed it.
Oh, okay, I have it saved in our files, so I apologize.
And, and I think for this, for this site, it's, it's principally Route 32 and the throughway that are the roads of concern.
I think it would be helpful to the planning board, Max, if you were able to observe it from the view sheds and give in your next memo, a report on whether or not it, it's either going to be visible or not visible, so it's, the fact that it isn't very visible doesn't count. So it's either going to be not visible or it is visible, and if it's not visible, it won't be visible at all, then they could, they have more room to go ahead and figure out what colors, but if it's going to be visible, then the colors are going to be required by the code.
I can do that, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Obviously, the planning board members can look for themselves as well, but I just thought it'd be helpful if Max provided the board with that analysis.
No, it would be, Rick, thank you very much for. Other questions from the board for the applicant?
Aye. Okay, on page A 102.
Let me take a look at that. Okay.
Um. And then, if you look at the, the home, the 3D rendering as well, the long, the long section that goes towards the back.
So this here?
Yes, and is that two stories? Because if you look at A 102, you've got stairs that go down to the basement, but then you've got stairs that go up.
Correct, so I'll spend a little bit, so basically the entire, so the entire living, living area, let's call it, which includes the garage, bathroom, the whole left section, is just a one-story slab of grade, which means you would walk in right without any steps, just a one-story walk-in. The bedroom section is raised a half a flight, half a flight. So therefore, that allows, that area is going to be a two-story. So it's going to have a basement underneath, so it's going to have a half a story going down into the basement, and a half a story up, a half a story up. So if you take a look at the, this section, this one, right elevation, you see it has the two stories, and if you take a look at the left side, that's the living section, which is right in between that floor. Oh, here you can see it better on the rear elevation. So you can see that.
So this black line is grade?
This black line is grade, yeah.
So you're going to have windows a little bit below grade?
A little bit below grade, yeah.
Okay.
So basically, because that area is an in-between floor, it's a split level. So you would walk off a half a flight to the bedrooms and walk down half a flight to the basement.
But the windows are going to actually look out on soil, the bottom part of the windows?
Yeah, they're going to have window wells, I mean, that, the client wanted a more low-looking house than one high, so we didn't want to raise the, the entire house. He wants specifically a walk-in from the living area, not having any stairs, any steps. So that's, that's the way it comes out like that. You can have a little bit of soil and the rest of it, rest of it, I mean, it's not an important basement, the entire living space is on the upper floor.
What is the height of the basement walls?
Um, it's a typical, it's a nine-foot basement. You wouldn't be able to see it from, from this picture, because this one has only the front, we're probably have a nine-foot basement, and it's going to be half in the ground and half exposed. So the windows are typically three-foot, three-foot, two, three-foot floor from the slab, and this would be great to be around four feet, so eight inches of it is going to be in the ground and the rest of it is going to be exposed.
For, to help the building inspector in enforcing whatever is approved by this board, you should have all those dimensions on the plans.
Correct, that, I mean, the final, yeah, I'll do it this one as well. And definitely the final plans has all the dimensions, heights, thickness of floors and all of that.
Well, the, the, the planning board just needs the outside dimensions, but they should all be on the plan that gets approved by the planning board.
Not a problem, I'll add that, definitely.
I would like to see the length of the house, you have the width of the house listed on page 11, which is 91 feet or inches, how far back does this house go? It looks like the bulk of the house is towards the rear.
I think it said 114 feet.
The most worst from the, the most as 100 to 14, that bedroom wing goes towards the back, and that's 100 to 14, the, the longest, I mean, really the left wing is a little bit less, but the longest has a dimension of 114, one and a half inch. Finish on top of traditional wood structure and regular asphalt shingles. The structure is going to be wood, it's going to be wood structure.
But the, the materials that are on top of the wood structure, you're saying is stucco?
No, yeah, white stuff, that is what is supposed to right now.
Okay, it's, the code requires wood, brick, or stone. And I'm not sure that stucco fits into that, but I'll leave that to Max.
The, the stucco is natural, is that the question, Rick?
Yeah, whether that fits into natural materials, perends, wood, brick, or stone. See, it doesn't say, for example, it actually itemizes those three, as I recall.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's actually more of a, a legal interpretation, right? Because it's not, it's not an example, it's, it's what they are.
Right, so it would have to fit in, stucco would have to fit into your, you would advise the board as to whether stucco fits into
wood, brick, or stone.
Stone category.
You know, I, I would also, well, let me, let me go over that with JT. I mean, I'd also want to see what, what the board had previously done, have there been any stucco homes previously?
Specifically.
Pardon?
I don't recall any.
Okay.
I can't remember off the top of my head, there's a lot of homes up there, but.
Well, it's also what was approved versus what might have been changed after the initial home was built. That's now been changed, as you know, in the code, but that, there was a different position taken for a while where homes could be reconfigured after approval and construction.
Right.
So I'm not sure that simply looking at homes there, and there might be some stucco homes, I, I would say that that doesn't mean that somehow that overrides the code, because it doesn't, the code.
Yeah, no, I, I was thinking more about if, if the board had made a decision already that, that perhaps stucco somehow equated to stone, I mean, it's, it's a mortar product, it's, it's not stone in appearance.
I mean, like, I live in a stucco house, it doesn't look like, it's just a smooth surface.
Yeah.
Really, from the street, it just looks smooth, so, I mean, but we're going to have another submission anyway, I know Larry's got some homework to do, so we're not at the, you know, let, I'll let you go back and do your research on that one, and.
Well, I, I mean, that, from a legal point of view, this doesn't even need an interpretation. Legal point of view, it has to be wood, brick, or stone. Now, if Max says that stucco is stone, that would be a surprise to me, but I'm surprised all the time. But I just wanted to advise the applicant, because the applicant, if it wants something other than wood, brick, or stone, needs to get a variance.
Right, that, you're part of the ZBA, right, for that?
That's correct.
If I may ask, on siding, is that part of, because I know, I can't say for sure, but I've read the original approvals, which was done back in, I think, 07, and they did have some stucco on it, I'll take a look at it, and if I did find the minutes, I'll bring that. But siding was definitely, which is basically a plastic material, it's kind of supposed to look like wood, but it's a plastic material.
It, it, we, we realize what we're talking about here, there are certain styles that were permitted, but there are also other restrictions with respect to something in the Ridge Preservation. Or a home that can be seen in the Ridge Preservation. For a home that can't be seen, then the planning board has the ability to waive some of that. But for a home that can be seen, this is what's required. Shall be constructed of natural materials, wood, brick, or stone, and shall be of a natural color. And that's why the issue of whether or not it's visible or not makes a big difference on other issues. And that's why the issue of whether or not it's visible or not makes a big difference on other issues as well.
Okay.
Any other comments or concerns from the board right now? Richard, you're okay? All right, um. I'm good for now. Sandy, you're okay too for now?
For now, yeah.
Okay. So Larry, a little bit of homework. Uh, you come back to us with.
Not a problem. So I'll, I'll take a look on that view quarters, um specifically. And if it's visible, I'll kind of propose and uh do some research in the materials and colors. Yeah. Uh, see what I can do in order to make it blend a little bit more. And uh, then kind of uh, again, I'll take a look at that material and color particularly. Was that the base? That that is, I guess, the biggest issue of there, because, I mean, height, obviously, all of that kind of compliance, I mean, it's those kind of things that needs to comply a little bit more, correct?
Well, it's anything that's in Max's memo that he's asked for, you'll need to comply with on your next mission. But yes, the ridge preservation is going to really be the crux right here, whether or not uh the view corridor, if you can be seen from the view corridor with colors and uh finishes and stuff like that, so.
That's set forth specifically in the code, I think Max's memo cites the section, um which is three, ten, thirteen B. So you can look in the code, um it's pretty clear as to what it has to be. And unless you can show that it can't be seen, uh that's really going to be controlling. And also, obviously, you need to be uh providing landscaping, as Max has um stated earlier.
Yeah, I'll do that. Um, just one question regarding that particularly, um reservation, if certain material was part of the original approval back in oh seven, was, will that, would something like that could be worked like, I've seen in the minutes, the the owner has presented certain materials, certain materials was approved. Is that, is that gonna, is that okay? Or?
No.
If it's, if it's a recommendation that that is invalid?
First of all, like I said before, just looking at minutes may not tell the whole story, because if you're looking at an approval for a home that was not visible, then that's not going to be apples to apples, right?
Correct, but that, but that was the entire project. It wasn't specific, like, just the original approvals of the tire form through the.
I know, but the origin, the original approvals have to be looked at in con- in conformance with the code. Right? And the code controls above all else, even if this board or a building inspector had told somebody they could go ahead and do something. If it contradicts the code, it's wrong. And you're not protected by reliance upon any other approvals by anybody else. You still are bound to the code. And even if there was a mistake made previously with someone else, that doesn't mean that you get the benefit of the mistake.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
Mr. Hartman, I do just have um one other question.
Sure.
On the, on, I guess it would be page three, the tax map.
Yeah.
So you gave us the comp that's at seven Allegheny. On the other side, those two lots that, uh but your lot, um are they built out already?
Yes, sure.
Okay. Um, can you give us just maybe the styles of those homes? Are they, are they can consistent with what you're asking for and and number seven?
No, they're not, they're not stucco. There has every single home on that entire, um probably ninety-nine percent of their development. It's a um, the number five is typical four-inch siding, um which, which is basically probably the most chosen material.
Okay.
Ninety, I would say ninety-eight to ninety-nine, other than a couple of houses that has a little bit of stucco. Um, they all have siding, a mix of siding and stone. Um, number five particularly, and of course, I'll bring you pictures next time, um has just white siding, um that's what it has. Number four has a more a light brown type of siding. And three is same thing. Three has some stone in it as well, four or five doesn't.
Okay, and the styles of those houses, are they more like what you wanna put up, or are they more, what's that, three Patterson pass?
I'll bring in some pictures. I'll have the board. I would say three, the five person pass. Um, no, they're probably more like the three Patterson pass. It's not as up to date, how you would call it, as the five Allegheny, the one I proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Anything else from the board, any comments or concerns?
I'm good. All right.
The only other thing, um Chris, is that you should note for the record or make a motion that this is a type-two action, and the seeker is, Max had indicated.
I will then offer a motion to type this as a type-two on the secret.
Second it, I second it.
By Robert. He was very forceful on that one.
I got this one.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, um, Mr. Hartman, little bit, little bit of homework, so once you get it back to us, we'll, we'll get you back on again, okay?
As usual, that's okay.
All right, thanks. Hey, but think about it, the more you do it, the more and more you'll you'll be professional, you know, you know.
Hundred percent, that, not, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, sir.
Good night.
All right. All right, item number three, courtyard slash merit, review and discuss revised documents submitted for proposed site plan, SWIP, EAF and traffic impact study for proposed one-hundred-and-eight-room hotel to include guest amenities, parking, associated utilities. Said property is located in New York State Route thirty-two on Turner Road in Central Valley, and is known as the Village of Woodbury, tapped back section two-two-six, lot one, block one, lot six dot one, seven and eight. Now, so Steve, Rich, Alino. Just, just you and Carlito tonight, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. All right, sir. Go ahead.
Well, we, uh, last time we were at the board, we uh been to the village board twice to discuss the uh reconfiguration of Turner Road. Uh, we've had several correspondents back and forth with the DOT. Uh, we've submitted our uh part two of the perm thirty-three application and actually received comments from the DOT this week, uh four comments, uh all pretty minor in nature. I think we could talk a little bit about that. And um, we're here just to, to discuss the uh memory, the review memorandums with the board and uh also request that we to see if we can have a meeting scheduled with your consultants and the sewer and water.
Okay. All right, Natalie. You are up.
All righty, so um Steve kind of mentioned that there have been some threshold issues uh identified as part of this application, including uh, you know, the status with the DOT, but also uh with the Board of Trustees and the land transfers that are required, takings and dedications. We'll look to have an update on that issue as well for the board's benefit. Um, we did provide a detailed memorandum, but I won't go over everything. I just wanted to point out a couple of issues. And Steve kind of already presented um that we are gonna recommend that uh the water and sewer department uh be solicited for their input on the application. Um, we also think that a will-serv letter for water and sewer facilities should be required for this application. Uh, it was something that you required for the shops at Woodbury, and I think for large-scale projects moving forward, that's um a good procedure to implement. Um. So we'll look for that. Um, specifically with respect to the sewer facilities, uh we note that the existing onsite sewer system um is part of the gravity, gravity collection system, part of the consolidated sewer area. Uh, that portion of the sewer uh conveys wastewater that's collected from the elementary school, homes and businesses along portions of Buena Vista Terrace through to Oakland Avenue and developments along Turner Road, so it is an important piece of infra- infrastructure for the village. And we think that a plan for relocating that sewer should be submitted. Uh, the plan should identify any service connections that are connected to the existing pipe and manhole, and if they're active, how they're gonna be reconnected to the new sewer. Um, the profile and invert information for the proposed and existing manhole connection should be provided. Um, and we think that that's important, so that should be addressed sooner than later as part of this application process. Um, we do believe there should be an existing easement that isn't shown on the plan for that sewer main that's crossing the applicant's property. Um, either way, if the plan proceeds, uh, you know, the existing easement would need to be extinguished and a new easement created for the new sewer. Um. As far as stormwater, uh, the applicant is responsible for compliance with the stormwater regulations under the code, as well as the general permit and the village's MS four obligations. Um, and then the general permit for construction activities. We have received the stormwater pollution prevention plan uh to initiate compliance with the stated regulations. And we did have a number of technical comments that we think can be resolved with future submissions. Um, with respect to grading, we think that a cut and fill analysis should be provided. Uh, and that the applicant should review the code criteria for retaining walls, in particular, those requirements for setbacks to property lines and adjust the plan as required. Uh, lighting and landscaping plans remain to be provided. Uh, we noted in our memo that the county planning department, our county planning department recommended that a sidewalk connection from Route thirty-two be provided. Um, we think that that's something that uh, you know, the board should consider with the applicant and uh traffic consultant and make a recommendation so that the applicant can address that on their plans. Um, we defer to council's recommendations on how the lot merger and the boundary line changes, where right-of-way dedications and taking should be addressed. Uh, ARB is obviously gonna be an important consideration due to the scale of the building, uh materials and signage, and your standard ARB form should be submitted at the appropriate time. Um, with respect to historic resources, the DEC requested uh a ship-o determination, which remains to be provided. Uh, two ESO meetings have been held on this application. Uh, after the recent meeting in February, uh, the applicant or the building inspector issued comments, uh including the comments from the ESOs in a memorandum dated February tenth. Uh, we believe how the applicant does with our memos and other consultant memos that those comments should be responded to um and compliance confirmed on the plan. Um. We're not sure if this was submitted in a separate package, but a fire truck template was provided by the Woodbury Fire Department. We think that should be used to confirm the turning movements throughout the site on the plan. And again, our memo was pretty detailed, but if there's any comments or questions from the board, I'd be happy to try to address them now.
You know what I don't see is, I don't see the water and sewer demand form.
That's right, that needs to be provided.
Right, so I know you're asking to go and talk to the sewer, and that is a form that should have been filled out with the application and then would be submitted for him to review and sign. The notice, the permission to inspect the site form is also, I don't see in the application either. So it looks like there's some missing pieces of the application that have to be submitted.
I think it's possible that that initial application um probably didn't include those forms. I think they were newer than when this started, but still, they should be provided.
Yeah, well, we'll definitely need the water and sewer, because that's, that's gonna go to uh Nikki.
Right.
Question from the board on Natalie's report? No, no, no. No. Okay, Natalie gets off easy tonight. All right. Rich. You're up, sir.
Good evening. Uh, just introduce myself to the board. It's my uh first time in front of you. Uh, Rich Andrea Collier's Engineering Design, uh formerly Major Consulting. Uh, I'm filling in for Phil Greeley tonight, who has finally given himself a little bit of a break, so. Um. So we had provided to your board on May thirteenth a review letter, uh reviewing the uh traffic study, the updated traffic study and the plans that were submitted for improvements on Route thirty-two at Turner Road. Uh, I'm not gonna go through everything that was in our our memo here, our letter here, but um a lot of, some of it's a little technical in nature and and doesn't really change the overall conclusions, but uh I just wanna hit, hit on a couple of things. Um, one of the things we did ask for was a uh traffic signal warrant analysis for thirty-two um and Turner Road intersection. Uh, we haven't received that as of yet. Um, we do, did note that the Avalon Development had provided a a similar traffic, similar warrant analysis for the Oakland Avenue intersection, and we're looking for input from the Department of Transportation on the possible signalization of that intersection, or whether maybe a signal at the Turner Road intersection would be a preferred location. Um, and that, that kind of goes towards some of the the coordination between those two projects. Um. The other thing that we did note was the 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 Beer World application, which is opposite uh the the hotel. Um, the improvements that are proposed with this project on Route thirty-two, uh, we believe should be coordinated with the Beer World project to make sure that left turns can be accommodated into the Beer World project as well as this into Turner Road. Um, so that's a key piece. Um, as Steve did mention, there was some comments from DOT that were received this week. Um, they were relatively minor, uh but one of the things that they did point, point out was the width of the proposed realignment of Turner Road, um and how trucks were gonna get into and out of there, one of their comments, and we had a similar comment was relative to the trucks and emergency vehicles making turns in and out of there shouldn't be crossing into uh oncoming traffic, so that's something that needs to be looked at. Uh, our proposal is actually to widen the approach of Turner Road to a thirty-foot wide roadway, uh to better accommodate those, those vehicles. Um, so that's something that should be looked at. Um. We did mention the potential for a cross-axis between the Avalon, uh between this property and the Avalon property. Uh, at least the pedestrian access would probably be beneficial. Um, so that's something that could be talked about. Um. And then uh, as Natalie mentioned, the county had commented on the the need, potential need for a pedestrian connection from thirty-two into the property. We had also noted whether or not a sidewalk along thirty-two was required, which is something the board should discuss. Uh, I would note that, you know, in this area, all the sidewalks are actually on the opposite side of the roadway today, but there is a crosswalk uh at Oakland Avenue that kind of leads to nowhere right now, but, you know, so maybe there's a, the desire to have cross sidewalks along this entire stretch on both sides of the roadway, so that's something that should be considered. Um, and then lastly, uh just update from the village board meeting last week, the item, you know, for discussion was held over. Uh, just kind of pending review of the uh current plans uh by the Village Highway Superintendent. So those are just the general overview of what's in our, our memo and uh happy to discuss anything. You have questions about further?
Any question for Rich? No. Okay.
All right, Max. Okay, we provided a uh memo to the board dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Go through the comments that haven't been otherwise addressed. Um, with regard to bulk requirements, minimum lot areas indicated, but uh there's also a minimum lot area per room, uh that should be added to the table, the bulk table. Um. So in the um note two, it indicates the combined parcel area is three-point-two-three acres. And in the bulk table, it shows uh hundred thirty-six-two sixty-four, which is uh three-point-one-three acres. So that should be reconciled. Um, proposed height and number of stories should be provided. Um, the specific height should be listed, um and the corresponding dimension shown on the building elevation. Uh. We noted that in twenty nineteen, the building size was proposed as a hundred and thirty thousand, seven twenty-nine. Uh, Natalie's memo of January twenty twenty-one indicated at that time it was seventy-nine thousand, two hundred. Um. We think it's, whatever's proposed today needs to be indicated uh on the site plan as well in the project description on the first page of uh the FEAF. So that it's, it's clear what the current proposed square footage is. Um. Landscaping, so, you know, a, a planting detail landscaping plan will need to be provided as uh the project progresses. Uh, we go through um what standards need to be met. Um. There's a fifteen-foot-wide landscape buffer in addition to the parking lot screening standards of the code. Um. In the hotel overlay, the parking spaces are allowed in the setbacks and yards, but not in the buffer. Uh, so it's unclear whether a full fifteen-foot buffer is going to be provided between the new proposed street line and the western. and the western edge of the parking area. Street trees are required along both frontages, Route thirty two and Turner Road. And they're going to be required pursuant to the code, which I believe is one per forty feet linear. The parking lot plan will require interior landscaping on islands. And for the hundred and thirty seven parking spaces, you would need fourteen parking lot trees, two and a half inch caliper. Three parking islands and four or five peninsulas are shown, so you'll need to figure out how you're going to get those parking trees into the parking area. Two parking, bus parking spaces are shown, but we didn't see any loading burst. Loading bursts are required for each twenty five thousand square feet of floor area. The dumpster locations seem to be shown, but they're not labeled on the site plan. It'd be helpful if those are just called out. Architectural review will be required, so supporting information will need to be submitted. Floor plans will also need to be submitted to determine compliance with the standards for the hotel rooms in terms of their size. Lighting details and photometric lighting spread will need to be provided in future submissions. Natalie dealt with the drainage. So with the wetlands, you're showing that they'll be undisturbed. We just note that there are local standards that will also need to be followed. And then with regard to the seeker, we defer as usual to Rick. But we note that under the New York State Health Department's type one list, this would require treatment as a type one action as a initial approval of a hotel or a motel. And involved agencies would be DOT, Orange County Health Department, New York State DEC, the ZBA, if variances are needed, and Orange County Sewer District Number One in town of Woodbury. We did note on the revised FEAF Part One that the answer to question E two H I, I guess that's Roman numeral one, still needs to be answered yes, as there are wetlands on the site. And because it's located within five hundred feet of a state highway, it will require referral to the Orange County Planning Department. And those are our comments.
Thank you very much. Question for Max?
Yeah, I just have a few points. One with respect to the fifteen foot landscape buffer that Max talked about. The, I believe the project has a stormwater facility that's in that. And just from a plain reading, it wouldn't appear that that would be considered a landscape buffer. The only thing that's allowed in there are driveways and sidewalks. It doesn't say stormwater facilities, et cetera. So something needs to be addressed there, either request for an interpretation that a stormwater management facility is considered to be landscaping. But until then, I would think a plain reading is that that's not permitted within the fifteen foot buffer, landscape buffer. With respect to seeker, this board went ahead with my direction to type it as an unlisted action, because it's an unlisted action under the seeker regs. However, as Max correctly noted, the Department of Health has its own type one list and in agencies are allowed to create their own type one lists. And if they do have one, then when there's a coordinated review, the lead agency is required to type it to the highest level that any of the local typing requires. So even though it's an unlisted action under the seeker regulations, because it is under the Department of Health's regulations, it's a type one action. This board should retype this as a type one action.
Rick, I don't, I, I usually put the date, but I didn't. I have that. We did type it as a type one.
We originally typed it as a type one because we thought it was over a hundred thousand square feet. And then it was determined, I thought that it was less than a hundred thousand square feet, and therefore it was going to be an unlisted action, and that's how we typed it. We retype it as an unlisted action, but now it should be retyped back to a type one, but for a different reason.
Okay.
Being that it's on a local expanded type one list and the lead agency is required to type it to the highest level that's required by any local list.
Okay.
So you would need to take that action tonight.
And then get an opinion from the building department on whether stormwater maintenance facilities are allowed in the buffer area, right?
Unless they're going to move it out of the buffer area.
Steve? Steve?
Steve, Chris is asking for your input.
You're muted, Steve.
Can you please repeat the question, Chris?
The stormwater maintenance facility that you have drawn on the plan is in the setbacks, is in the fifteen foot.
Fifteen foot buffer.
Now, the code says we, the code doesn't appear to allow that. So we would either have to get an opinion from the building department if that's allowed in that area, or you would have to relocate it somewhere else.
Can I pull a plan up? Because I'm not sure, because the only stormwater facility that we're proposing is actually underground in the parking lot. Catch basins and things like that, but those would be associated with any of the access drives or parking areas.
You can share.
The
I know at one time there was a question about the wetland area and how that was going to be handled as part of the buffer. And I think we had suggested, and correct me if I'm wrong, because it was some time ago, that the applicant should show the existing landscaping in that area and determine whether or not that that was going to be sufficient. But let's look at the plan and go over it. Because I have some other questions that maybe, you know, either Rick or Max may have input on as far as, I think the code reads that the boundary, it should be fifteen feet from the boundary. So is that going to be the proposed lot lines? And then does that include those right of way areas that are taking and being dedicated? Just some of the things.
Property boundary.
Right. Like the proposed.
Right.
Yeah, I can't share my screen.
Natalie, can you?
Oh, hold on, I.
Yes.
Apparently forgot how to left click. I gotta put a, I gotta send myself back to left click class. You should really share now.
So the only, the this square right here is the, is going to be an underground, you know, stormwater management facility. And it's well beyond the, this is the fifty foot setback right here. We're in that setback, but we're entitled to be there. The fifteen foot setback, we're well outside of. Unless I'm missing something.
I think that the requirement of the code is that there should be a fifteen foot landscape buffer area along all boundary lines.
Right. I get that. We get that, but I'm not, I'm not understanding the question about the stormwater management facility.
I thought that there was one in there. It might have been my mistake.
No. Yeah, the only one we have, Rick, is this one right here. It's in the back. Well, you know, well, it's probably forty feet from the closest, you know, if this is fifty feet, you know, we're probably forty feet from that.
And those, those parking spots are more than fifteen feet from the boundary line, Steve?
We are going to check that. These are going to be, these are within the fifteen foot setback. So we're going to have to address that.
Okay.
And then the other question is, is, again, this may be a, I think Natalie just brought up is, you know, we have boundaries now. We likely will have different boundaries at the end of the day. And, you know, where do we establish the fifteen foot setback? But, you know, we had, we're short a couple of feet here, so we think we can make that work. Either from exist, from the, what we're proposing is the new right of way line or boundary line.
Well, your whole plan is, I think, premised upon the reconfigured driveway. Turner Road rather. But I think you ought to be, therefore, figuring where those boundaries would be and then calculating the fifteen foot buffer.
Correct.
Now, with respect to the reconfiguration of Turner Road, I know you've been before the Board of Trustees twice. But the chairman noticed, I was not at the Board of Trustees last meeting and it was Kelly. But the chairman noted in reviewing that, that it didn't appear like the board was discussing. In addition to the land swap issue, it didn't seem like they were discussing whether they were or were not in favor of the reconfiguration specifically. So rather than you having you go back for a third time, the plane board needs some clarity on that. And so what we'll do is we'll have Kelly bring it up to a future Board of Trustees meeting for, to get better guidance from the Board of Trustees with respect to the reconfiguration.
Right. Well, there was two items that came up, Rich identified one of them, which is, you know, the highway superintendent had not had a set of plans, it was not referred to him. We said to set a plan, handle a set of plans the next day to Rob. And then the other question was one of the trustees asked if they did not, I'm going to go to a different plan, a little easier to look at. This is the, so right now the blue line represents the existing property line, you know, by deed. As you can see, this area is, you know, the one, one lot because actually goes over Route thirty two. And then existing Turner Drive goes like, it's kind of a Y and it goes like right in here. So what we're suggesting is that the red be the new proposed right of way line, which gives enough room to install the turn lane, clean up some of the existing sort of asphalt that really just kind of grew. I'm not sure right now I got there. And then realign Turner Road to be perpendicular to the existing hotel drive, which is right here. So the question from the, so we're suggesting that this piece of land, which is currently part of the tax parcels of this application, be offered for dedication to the village. Typically when roads, deeds go to the center line of road or within the traveled way, that's typically dedicated to the municipality or whoever has jurisdiction over the traveled way. So one of the questions, and Rick, you and Kelly weren't there, by one of the trustees was, well, what if we don't want the land? We advise that that's really an answer. That's a question you should answer. So that's when the mayor suggested to table this.
Steve, I attended that meeting and I mean, I was, I was a little confused because I believe one of the trustees asked you if Turner Road was going to be used to access the hotel and your answer was no. And I, I'm confused. I thought that the northern right in, I thought that was a right in and a right out only. And that in order to get into the hotel, if you were southbound, that you would have to go to Turner Road, go down Turner Road and then make a left into the hotel.
Right. So this is our main entrance is right here. The DOT, they do not want us to have a left turn out of here. So they're restricting that. And since there is, again, this is policy of the department. If there's an alternative road to take, you know, they can request that we do that. And they did so during this process. But in order for us to make that a safe and reasonable intersection, you know, this, this has to be realigned.
I understand that, but again, if you're coming southbound on thirty two from Newburgh, that northern, that northern main entrance, as you call it, how can you possibly make a left hand turn in there?
You're not, you would, you would use Turner Road.
Okay, so, so then the southbound entrance into the hotel is off of Turner Road.
Correct.
Okay. Because that wasn't made, that was not clear at all at the, at the village board meeting. And I, and I think there was confusion there. They couldn't understand, you know, how, how you were supposed to get into the hotel if you were coming southbound.
Well, if you recall, part of the improvements on Route thirty two is that we're proposing a left hand turn lane right here, two access turn. And then a through lane for, you know, for southbound track.
But Turner Road is still a village road, and this is what I've asked you multiple times. And I watched the village board meeting too. When I walked out of that meeting going, huh?
Yeah.
You, you kept talking about land swaps and dedication. You never actually said to them, we need to improve Turner Road, which you own the village. Can we improve Turner Road? Those words have not come out of anybody's mouth yet. And that is what this board has specifically tasked you with and asked you to do because its entire plan cruxes on Turner Road. And I'm sorry, I'm frustrated, but this is now the third time we're talking about this. And I want to stop wasting everybody's time here. So I know Ricky and Kelly are going to go back and clarify the situation to the Board of Trustees so they know what they're actually being asked. But I don't know how much clearer I can make it. And I thought I was pretty clear the last time.
Well, I, you know, we, we thought we were pretty clear with, you know, this plan that's been developed over a period of eighteen months or or at least a year with the DOT and your consultants. And, you know, this is a hybrid of two or three different plans that we presented through during this process. And this is the one that, you know, we were required to satisfy the DOT because it's their jurisdiction.
Right. And that was another question that was asked of you is the DOT requiring this? And you didn't, you, you, you're circling around the answer. So if, trust me, I've been with this application as long as you have right now. I've been through every reiteration, and so have the five members on this board. So if you have two members in the planning board that have been involved in this since day one, that walked out of the meeting going, what just happened? How do you think the village board feels that is just getting involved in this right now? But listen, it's your application. So if you want to keep pushing forward without the village board sign off, that's absolutely fine. I will keep pushing the application forward. And this board will keep pushing the application forward as far as we can. But I'm not going to bring this up again. I'm beyond frustrated with this. Maybe else have any other questions? And I know you said you wanted to talk to the water superintendent. We need the water demand form filled out. The building department can give it to you. I want that to be reviewed by the water and sewer department. And you asked for a consultants meeting. What's up? What's going on that we need a consultants meeting for?
No, I said, to me with your sewer and water department, typically Natalie or Dennis would be, would accompany that, would be there during that meeting.
Yeah, let's get the form filled out from Maria first. We'll get it over to the water and sewer to review so he knows what's going on and then we'll get that.
We'll reach out to the department and get the form.
Oh, we got a request, we type one, right, Rick?
That's correct.
All right. I'll make a motion to retype this as a type one action on the seeker.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Five nineteen, twenty twenty one, Sandy. I see you putting on your folder now. Five nineteen of twenty twenty one. I know you usually put it on the front of your folder.
Thank you. I already did it. Yes. Thank you. I already did it.
All right, any other questions for members of the board, or for the consult, or for the applicants tonight?
I have a question for Steve.
Go ahead.
Uh, Steve, have you had any formal meetings with the people from Beer World, which is gonna be possibly opposite the hotel and the other hotel as far as coordinating some plans? Because, I mean, one, one is gonna interact with the other somehow.
Right. Uh, I'll look, Carlito, if you, you wanna take that one?
Uh, sure. So, um, uh, I ha- I happen to be the traffic engineering consultant for Beer World as well. So, um, that, they, they're in tune with the plan for Marriott, and we did make an application to DOT. Um, on the Beer World application, we're waiting for feedback uh, from DOT on that application before we, um, formalize how we would, um, you know, formally design the access for Beer World in conjunction with what's happening with the access for the Marriott, as well as the improvements at Turner Road. Um, I think, uh, you know, unfortunately, we, we can't let other applications that are lagging this application you know, drive what's occurring with, 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 with this application. I think the positive with application is we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from DOT. And understanding that we need input from the village board um, on their acceptance of the Turner Road improvements, I think um, all professionals that are involved on that, this application, recognize that those Turner Road improvements are needed. Safety improvements with or without the project. Um, that was something that DOT brought up early on in the process, and, you know, as was alluded to, um, earlier, we've gotten feedback and, unbelievably, in a timely manner from DOT on our latest submittal. And overall, it's very positive. Rich did allude to the fact that they, they want some additional information with turning templates for the trucks turning in and out of Turner Road. But, you know, their conclusion is that they're positively in favor of what we're proposing out at Turner Road to, to reconfigure that, that intersection and provide the left turn lane. But absolutely, as that progresses, and when we get more feedback on Beer World, there's gonna have to be an overall coordination. And ideally, um, you know, DOT is gonna have input. They're not gonna, they're not gonna wanna see disturbance in the roadway um, for one application, and then six months later, have it re disturbed, uh, for another application. So, you know, that, I think the benefit there is, you know, we're working on both, and we're handling both DOT permit applications, so that level of coordination can happen um, in our office, as well as working with colliers and DOT.
Uh, Robert, just, and, and just to let you know, we also have been coordinating with Avalon. Uh, we've had a couple of meetings with Avalon, the DOT, uh, and your consultants during this process as well.
Yeah, and I, I think that, 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 that's something that maybe we should circle back to on, on one of Rich's comments uh, with respect to the traffic signal warrant analysis. Uh, we will provide that analysis for the intersection of Turner Road, uh, with our application. However, I think it's important to note that what would ultimately drive a traffic signal going in at Turner Road for Oakland isn't necessarily our but it'd be our application then with the Avalon traffic added on top of it. And I think what we're doing at Turner Road, uh, would not prevent a signal going in at Turner Road. But also what we're doing at Turner Road, um, if the signal went in at Oakland, our traffic can still come out at the Turner Road access, go down to Oakland, and make the left-hand turn under the protection of the traffic signal. So I think what's, what's nice about what we're proposing is it stands on its own, but it doesn't prevent future signalization with the Avalon application.
Is there any possibility of having two traffic lights, one at Oakland and one at Turner, and have them coordinate working together similar to the one that's a Strata Road on Route thirty-two and Smith Close Road? They work, you know, together in a sense. Has that ever been explored or discussed?
I, I, and other people that have been party to the DOT meetings, I think the, the battle, um, with them right now is to get them to accept one signal. Um, so I think if, if you tried to ask for two, it may be a non-starter with them. But if you put the signal in at Oakland, you can prohibit left turns from Turner. So then anyone that was using Turner Road can make the left hand, at, left-hand turn out to thirty-two because that's really the critical movement, is that left-hand turn from the side street out onto thirty-two, and you can have them all perform that left-hand turn maneuver at the new driveway opposite Oakland. If, if, if that was what the DOT ultimately approved of the Avalon project.
Rob.
Carlito, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Chris.
Ladies first.
Okay, um, actually, this is kind of a question for Carlito and Rich. Um, it was my understanding with those discussions regarding the warrant analysis that if we could get something, uh, showing both the impact from Avalon, Marriott, and Beer World, Beer World, that that might rise to the level of requiring the traffic signal? Has that, or is that going to be submitted at any time to the DOT to kind of bring to, to make that happen? Or is, I mean, is that possible? Or does it have to be standalone such that, you know, it wouldn't be required, or just not sure where that was going, or if that was something that, if, if that was your comment, Rich, or if, or Phil had, if that was his intention?
So I think our comment was for, for, relative to this project, was for for Marriott to show that whether or not they warrant a signal as a standalone project at Turner Road, right? I think there's some other things that go to the Avalon project that, meaning requiring access directly to a state highway that, uh, kind of go towards them having to provide an analysis of the, um, of that Oakland Avenue intersection um, in which they have, they have done, and I, I, my, I believe that their analysis includes the traffic for, uh, for this Marriott already. I'm not sure if it includes Beer World as of yet. So, um, so I think the Oakland Avenue analysis is, is, is kind of there. The, the Turner Road that we're asking Carlito to provide, um, we think, you know, it should incorporate the traffic from the other uh, hotels, the other hotel in Beer World. But a lot of that traffic would have to be through traffic through the intersection, not really turning movements at Turner Road uh, because of the, the need for Turner Road to theoretically, I mean, sorry, Avalon theoretically haven't accessed directly to the state highway. Um, the only other thing, the one other thing that I did want to add to, um, what Carlito was saying earlier was, uh, you know, we understand that Beer World is, is behind, maybe a little behind what, where, where we are now. I think from our perspective, we just want to be able to show to the board that um, if DOT was to require a left turn lane for Beer World in the future, that that can be accommodated. And whether, how that gets coordinated with the two projects going ahead, we just want to make sure that, that those two left turn lanes in opposite directions can, can fit in the short distance that we have there and how that would work. So those are just two things that I want to point out.
Right. And I, I think that's gonna be part, you know, I guess Beer World isn't on the agenda tonight, but I can say it is part of our response to Maz's comments on that application. And ultimately, what we, we would maybe likely hear from DOT is we're gonna have to show how that access folds into what's occurring here.
Rob, just, just to add on to what Rich and Carlito had spoken, I think in our second or third meeting with the DOT, um, they actually went from not wanting a, a, a traffic light at all, to actually starting to consider putting one in Oakland. So we, we the applicants and the consultants have made progress on that front, is, is getting into, getting a traffic light somewhere there. Uh, it looked like it was gonna be Oakland if the DOT went for it. I know I spoke to Phil today, and, um, the DOT is, um, has agreed at some point to come out and actually look at the intersection firsthand. Um, to, to see some of the concerns that, uh, we've all voiced to them on some of these calls with the DOT, so they can see that there's some traffic buildups and the turnouts and stuff like that. So I'm hopeful in that after they come out and they see it firsthand and how traffic actually flows and moves in real time through that intersection, that will be able to get a traffic like some, somewhere in that stretch of roadway somewhere to create, I think, as Phil said it, to create the, the breaks in that, in that traffic to allow cars to flow in and out. So I know it's still, it's still in DOT's mind. It hasn't been left to the side yet.
Good.
Um, I have one question about the stormwater management, uh, that's underground on that side of that building. Is it just, is it just drywells, or is it an actual, like, is the whole space under it vacant and filled with water in this asphalt over it? Or is it just a couple of big drywells?
Uh, I don't know. I don't have the answer to that question, Chris. Uh, Jay Samuelson, uh, Jerry Properties is, wasn't able to be, attend this meeting, uh, but we can, we'll, we'll have that on our next mission.
Okay, because the reason I ask is that if a ladder truck, a ladder truck can't set on, ladder truck can't set up on a drywall, the, the tormentors will just push through the asphalt. So if it's gonna be one big open space, I just want to let the fire department know that that's gonna be a potential, uh, potential issue for them. Thank you.
I, I, I would just have one follow-up question on, you know, I think both Rich and Natalie's comment about the sidewalk. Um, if we could get some clarification as to where you may be looking at sidewalk, because if, if we're going to be doing sidewalk out along thirty-two, we want to make sure it's on any future, uh, village submittal, as well as any future DOT submittal. Ben, you don't have to have the answer now, but maybe if we just follow up and, and get that, if you had an idea where, where you were looking for the sidewalk.
Is there any possibility of a sidewalk leading to Woodbury Commons, uh, through Turner Road? I mean, I imagine a lot of the hotel guests could walk from the hotel to Woodbury Commons. It's not that far.
Hey, Steve, I can't, um, speak on behalf of, of the applicant or client, but I think, I think the, our, our client is willing to do sidewalk where he controls the frontage. Um, but where you run into issues, once you get beyond their frontage, um, you know, it's not as simple as just necessarily placing it in the right of way. Sometimes there are drainage or slope easements that are needed on property that's not controlled, uh, by the applicant. But, you know, if there was a future thought of having sidewalk connection all the way down to Woodbury Common, I don't think our clients are opposed to facilitating that by providing the sidewalk along their frontage. Thank you.
I don't think the DOT's mentioned anything about part of the improvements that they wanted is a sidewalk on that side of thirty-two. I don't think it's come up, right?
No, it hasn't. And, and I think, uh, in large part because they went through a major sidewalk improvement project recently on the west side of thirty-two.
Yeah, the, the only reason for our comment on that was the fact that there is that one crosswalk at Oakland Avenue, and maybe that was put there as, as a desire for some future crosswalk, a sidewalk system on the, on this side of thirty-two, but it gets really more up to the village, their desires where sidewalks go, and the DOT will probably go along with that as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be silly to put, it'd be like the sidewalk to nowhere.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
On, on that side, on, on that, on, on that side of the street, it would dead-end somebody's house and right, and then a gas station on the other side. So I mean, I guess if you couldn't sleep and you'd wanna walk around the hotel, you'd go out and just walk up and down thirty-two, but.
Yeah, the ne- the next nearest sidewalk on that side of the road is up near Strata Drive, so it's a pretty good distance, so. But we just, you know, we brought up that comment for discussion, so.
We'll double-check with the DOT though, Rob, next time we talk to them and see if they say anything.
The other area to consider the sidewalk is kind of like Rob was saying, along Turner Road. Um, you know, with the other hotel project going in, it could be an opportunity to extend a sidewalk all along, all along there. Um, just, just something for the board to consider as well.
All, all along right into like that Woodbury Commons?
No, that it would extend into Woodbury Common, but I know one of these properties has that emergency access to Woodbury Common, so if it could, you know, I'd have to look at the, the aerial and see if that would work, but.
But Natalie, if, if some of that property is, they're asking for the village to take, so then would that be on the village to put the sidewalk in? On that part in the beginning, off of thirty-two?
I think it would be part of the overall improvement plan that the village would have to consider, um, and, and provide input on, as well as from the highway department. And then depending on, uh, where the sidewalks were located, it would be obviously within the right-of-way area. So again, I think that just all needs to be, if, if it's something that the planning board would want to see, um, it should be something that the applicant presents to the village board as part of their improvements.
So Rob, you're saying, is my screen, is my screen sharing? Nope, not yet. Hold on. That's why. So you're saying come down Turner Road into here with the sidewalk?
Into, uh, pretty close to the emergency gate.
Yeah, that's right.
That leads to a parking lot.
Right here. That's the emergency gate is.
With res- with respect to off-site improvements, which is what you're talking about, you, you can clearly require an applicant to put in sidewalks on their property, right? That would eventually, with other improvements, have other property owners, um, connect as well, um, to that. But unless the off-site improvement is related to a mitigation of a significant adverse environmental impact, um, then the board can't require someone to do that.
Yeah, so if we go along with Rick's, where you'd have a sidewalk here, if, if the other hotel gets approved, it'd go to somewhere like in here.
Right.
And then this is, this is already built out, and there's no sidewalk there. This is being built out, and I don't think there was any sidewalk approved with them. So, I mean, it would work. It would just still dump you out on Turner Road at some point.
Right. And then, I mean, the village obviously could, you know, apply for grants or other things to construct them themselves um, for the remainder. But it, um, I just wanted to make it clear before we went too far down that, that, uh, you can require it on the applicant's property, but you wouldn't require off-site improvements that they would have to build a long sidewalk all the way to Woodbury Common, unless it was in mitigation of a identified significant adverse environmental impact.
All right. So anything, anything else from board members or consultants tonight for the Marriott? All right, so Steve, you'll get that form over to, uh, Rick, you had something about an entity disclosure form, I think, that had to be updated too, right?
Uh, yes, um, I, I can't remember the particulars as to why you needed a new entity disclosure form. Um, but I would go ahead, Steve, and, and look at the one you submitted and see, in fact, if that is up to date. If you're unclear, you can give me a call and, uh, I'll figure out why I identified that, but I can't remember the particulars right now.
Is, is that the LLC form?
Yes.
All right. Well, I think whatever, the one we filled out, we got from Maria, so is, if there's something different?
I think there have been some form changes.
There has been some form changes, yes.
Since two thousand nineteen.
All right, well, I'll, I'll reach out to her and ask her to send us all, all the current forms.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Well, I'll stop sharing my screen. No one wants to see the map anymore. No other business, anything else to talk about tonight?
Not for me.
Who wants to make the motion to close?
Make the motion.
Sandy, I'll second Sandy's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See everybody in two weeks.
Okay, thanks.
Bye, everybody.